Good evening, welcome to the November 2nd, 2011 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum presence, so I'll call the meeting to order at this time. Before we proceed with the regular agenda tonight, I want to recognize visitors in our audience tonight representing Leadership Rutherford and Youth Leadership Rutherford. If I can get you guys to stand, so we can see who you are. Thank you very much for being here, I appreciate you doing that, it's a great program, both of them, so thank you very much. Mr. Huddleston, I think he was in Leadership Cannon's Borough. You know?
Man, right?
We'll move on to the consent agenda right now, we have one item on the consent agenda, that is a mandatory referral for easement abandonment along West Malloy Lane, Johnson Control is applicant. Are there any additions? Does anybody have any desires to remove this from the consent agenda on the Planning Commission, or in tonight's audience, or in the -- excuse me, I'm having problems tonight -- or in the staff? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Move for adoption of the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We have three public hearings scheduled this evening, the first of which is a rezoning request for approximately 19.11 acres located along southeast Broad from PCD to commercial highway, including approximately 12.97 acres south of Joby Jackson Parkway, and approximately 6.14 acres north of Joby Jackson Parkway. Ashley Hastings, FLP, and Shane Hastings, FLP are the applicants.
Ms. Ely.
Thank you. Our first public hearing this evening is to consider rezoning properties located along the western side of Manchester Pike, or Highway 41, from their current PCD, Planned Commercial District Zone, to CH, Highway Commercial District. The properties are located both along the north and south side of Joby Jackson Parkway, if you look at your illustration, the area that we are considering for rezoning is shaded in both the blue and the orange color. And these properties were zoned to PCD in 2006, and at that time, there were some co-applicants that came together, made a plan, submitted a program book to Planning Commission and Council, and that was approved. Since that time, ownership has changed, I know that the bank has become involved and owns one or two of the parcels, and then -- so the ownership is fragmented now, and so it's not likely that this can develop as one development under one plan. So, they've come before staff, and the staff comments do mention that one of the property owners wasn't contacted at the time that we prepared the staff comments, but I did want to point out that I put an email on your desk from Mr. Williams, the property owner we hadn't contacted yet, and he submitted in writing his support of the application. So, all the property owners are in support, and actually request that this change be made. The CH zone would permit essentially all the uses that are permitted in the PCD zone, so they don't vary drastically. We did take an excerpt from that program book that was approved in 2006, included in your agenda packets, and it's on the screen now. You can see that, you can see the concept plan, and how they're proposing that that would develop at one time. The -- let's see, make sure I'm not missing anything. Okay, I have gotten several calls about this, and it seems like people have been interested in it. I have put the request online, so if people are interested in this rezoning, they could go to our website and take a look at it. But, other than that, I don't have any additional comments. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing before making a recommendation on whether you desire this to be rezoned to CH or not. If you have any questions, either before or after the public hearing, I'd be glad to answer them, or Mr. Adalino would enjoy it as well.
Any questions for the staff? Okay. Before I open the public hearing, I'll briefly go over the rules we conduct our public hearings by. We'll open the public hearing, invite anybody to come forward that'd like to speak either for or against the proposal. Since we have numerous people here, we'd like to ask you to keep your comments to no more than three minutes, make all your comments toward the Planning Commission, not toward the applicant. And if you have any questions, the staff will make a note of your questions, and try to address those at the end of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak on this matter. Anybody at all? Seeing nobody come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any questions of the Planning Commission? Now that we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the rezoning.
Motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Second public hearing is a rezoning request for property at 503 North Manny Avenue, consisting of approximately .42 acres from RS8 to a planned commercial district. Mr. Peter Demos is applicant. Ms. Ely.
Thank you again. The second public hearing of the evening is to consider rezoning property that's located at 503 North Manny Avenue, from its RS8 zone, which is single-family residential district, single-family residential district to PCD Planned Commercial District. The property is located north of Bell Street, and west of North Manny Avenue, and you can see it on, as the blue rectangle on the map before you. The property is currently developed, it has a house located on the property, and it's little less than half an acre, it's .42 acres. The majority of the properties that front along North Manny Avenue are zoned RS8, Single Family Residential District. Just across the street from this project, however, there are some properties that are zoned OGR, which is General Office District Residential. And just one block to the south is a property that is zoned PUD, and it's Plain Unit District, and that's actually the location of the Carriage Lane Inn, which is where we, not we, where I attended, and my fellow staff members attended, a neighborhood meeting held by the applicants, where they invited residents to come out, and actually, it was within walking distance, so it turned out to, I think, be a good attendance that evening on October 11th, to see the plan, and hear directly from the applicants what they would like to do. And so, you do have before you a program booklet, what we call those, which outlines the proposed developers of the Demoses' intention, how they plan to use that property. It appears that although the house seems to be older, that maybe in 1984, it was a three-family dwelling, and from Mr. Demos' testimony, it's been, or he says that it's been chopped up, I say chopped up, but the inside, interior, the way it's been changed throughout time has made it kind of difficult to rehab back to a single-family house, because the zoning here would permit single-family residents by rights. So, he's proposing to make some changes, changes which he thinks improves the property, adding landscaping, of course putting the parking in the rear, working with a neighbor, they have a joint access, and so working with them on landscaping the area between them, and also making sure that they have the ability to use their driveway. It's all outlined in the book for you. The Demoses' plan on, and we know them for restaurants, but actually, this structure they want to use as an office, the downstairs will be their office space, so they'll have employees there who will do the general office work, and then the upstairs will be a storage area, so when you look at the parking calculations, you see that they take into account that the office space will be just that first floor with storage of records and other various information on the second floor. Let's see, if there's anything else. They are, of course, proposing a buffer around the property, and you can see that in your program book. As I mentioned before, they did have a neighborhood meeting that was well-attended, and I think that there were lots of good questions at the meeting, and I hope that some of those people have come today. The applicants are here in the audience this evening, so if you have questions from them, they'll be glad to answer them. There's also Mr. Brick Murfree, who is representing them, and their design engineer, Bill Huddleston, who are available to answer questions. I think Mr. Murfree would like to give a short presentation, and I don't know if his applicant wants to speak after that, but if you would allow it at this time, he'd like to come forward and speak, and then after that, we should conduct a public hearing before you make any recommendations.
Okay, Mr. Murfree.
Thank you, Ms. Ely, members of the Planning Commission staff. I'm Brick Murfree of the law firm of Murfree &amp; Murfree. Our firm is located at 805 South Church Street here in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. As Ms. Ely mentioned, the Demos family is requesting rezoning of this property, which is located at 503 North Manny Avenue, for use as their family's restaurant offices. The property is located at the corner of Bell Street and Manny Avenue, about two blocks from historic Oakland's mansion. The home was built prior to 1901, and for many years was used as a single-family residence. However, at some point, it was cut up into a triplex, and was rented out to numerous different individuals, so it was a triplex kind of situation, and that's how it's configured today. In fact, rumor has it that one of the upstairs closets was rented out as a room, so it was kind of a multifamily situation, so to speak. Let's see, the application before you tonight is to rezone the property from RS8 to Plain Commercial District. Because the family has asked that it be a planned development, they've submitted a program book to you today, and those are the commitments that they're making you tonight will become part of the zoning. I'm going to go through a couple of the highlights of those commitments and the current situation with the house. One of the things about the house currently is there's a metal staircase that's exterior, that serves as an outside entryway, or point for upstairs tenants. It's a kind of a big eyesore, it's metal, it's black. That's going to be removed and closed off. The house is going to be repaired, the effort is going to be to restore the house to its former glory, it's a beautiful old historic house. Once again, that staircase is going to be removed, the metal railings on the front porch are going to be removed and replaced with wooden railings. The wooden porch is going to be replaced with a teak flooring that'll imitate wood, but it'll be a little bit more hardy, so to speak, in terms of maintenance. The siding of the home is going to reflect the original siding of the home, and it's going to be a pale kind of neutral color. The storm door that's currently on the front door of the house is going to be removed. The goal there is to showcase the beautiful wooden door that's behind, and kind of hidden from public view. The windows are going to be replaced for energy conservation purposes, but they're going to put in some custom windows that'll replicate the historic windows of the home. Outdoor signage for the property will be two feet wide, no more than three feet square. The existing concrete block garage on the property is going to be removed. Many of the original design elements of the home, interior design elements of the home are going to be refurbished, for example, the pocket wooden doors, the banister, they're going to try to salvage the fireplaces, et cetera. So, the goal is not only to improve the outside of the home, but also the inside of the home. Office hours will be eight to five, and one thing I think it's important to point out is there's already commercial on this corner. Across the street from this property is the Mid-South Vet Clinic, and then catty-corner to this property is Murphy Thomas's medical office. So, there's already commercial on that corner already, and those commercial buildings don't have the restrictions that the planned development will have, and so, we feel like it'll be a good addition to the community there, but also, Planning Commission and the citizens will have some assurances about what's going to be done with the home, and also, in the future, that the home wouldn't be torn down. So, Mr. Bill Huddleston is going to make a few comments, and Mr. Peter Demos will make a few comments as well, and we'll be here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Mr. Huddleston.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Bill Huddleston, President of Huddleston Steel Engineering here in Murfreesboro, and we prepared the pattern booklet that I believe is before you tonight. Again, as we've discussed before, the concept plan that shows the layout of this development is on the seventh sheet after the table of contents. The only sort of design detail we're still looking to work out, we're still looking to get with Ms. Black, the property owner to the north, I see she's here tonight, so it's good to see her, but we haven't gotten together, but we can get together before site plan, before we even submit the site plan for site plan approval, and work out a couple of design details for the curb and landscaping along her property line.
Thank you, Mr. Huddleston.
Thank you.
Mr. Demos, did you want to come up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Peter Demos, I'm President of Demos's Restaurant located at 1119 Northwest Broad Street. Currently, right now, we have two offices, the small building that's located in the back of the parking lot of the restaurant that's on Broad Street, and then, we have another office that we have over, off the square at the Durham and Associates Building. We have five full-time employees at our offices, and two part-time employees, and then some people that just kind of come and go, like myself, and are Director of Kitchen Operations, that come in just to need a desk for a day or two. We've been looking for offices since about 2008, just trying to combine and make something actually work for us. Currently, right now, we looked for two years and just couldn't find anything that was just the right fit, and something that would fit the, all the needs that we currently have, and just to be part of what we consider just a family business. My wife actually drove by this property, and she saw it, and she fell in love with it, called me, I came by and looked at it, and fell in love with it instantly, it was just home. And that's, again, a big part for us, is to find a place that we can find that feels like home. And so, we looked into it, and we made an offer on it, and we're really hoping that we can go in there. We love the history of the house, we want to maintain the historic fabric of the neighborhood, and we really want to be very good neighbors with everybody in the area, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Demos. Does the Planning Commission members have any questions for the development team? Okay. By the way, when I open the public hearing, if you do want to come forward, please state your name and give your address at the start of your comments. So, this time, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak either for or against this proposal.
I'm Dr. E.C. Talbert, and I live at 7279 Vaughn Road in the Blackman Community. We own the building on the corner, directly across from the property being addressed and discussed tonight, as well as other buildings in this block. As property owners, we are very concerned with the hospital exiting the inner-city area. The in-town community must be preserved in an adequate fashion, so this area will not lose its value for the inner-city community. The city has already spent, and is planning to spend even more, even yet, considerable taxpayer funds to develop the Oakland's Park area. The healthcare industry also has invested monies individually in properties in close proximity to the property under discussion. This community is an important support to the historic square and the Main Street preservation effort. It's important to keep this area attractive, and preserve as many older structures as possible to provide economic viability for the area. The small home adjacent to this house was recently marked by the APTA, that's the Association for the Preservation of Tennessee Antiquities, and this was a positive effort to maintain the historic value in this area. The Demos project is particularly important due to the fact that it fits all the criteria for preserving, improving, enhancing the property value, and providing the impetus for the future development of this area. As a property owner, I am most concerned with protecting my investment in this part of the older fabric of early Murfreesboro, and I am sure that other property owners are interested in protecting their investments as well. In conclusion, let me say, we strongly support the rezoning of this area to the end that we can accomplish the preservation of historic structures in this original section of Murfreesboro, while creating a variety of uses to enhance the economic value of this part of the city. The proposed Demos project certainly achieves this goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Talbert. Who'd like to be next?
Afternoon, Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission. My name's Bill Jakes, I'm a neighbor to this property, I live approximately two blocks away, and I just basically wanted to take a minute to say that I support this very much as well. There are a couple of reasons why it's important to me. Mainly, from a preservation standpoint, I believe that the Demos family have the ability to repair the structure. I've been inside of it, and I'm pretty familiar with it, and it's going to take quite a bit of work to preserve the building. I think we need more than just residential in the neighborhood, even though I like to see the influence on residential. Many of you probably remember, not so many years ago, there were grocery stores up and down Manny Avenue, and so the community really was formed with multiple uses, and I think this use would definitely fit in with our residential feel of the neighborhood that we have now. And, other than that, I can't really come up with my other points that I had in mind, but just wanted to, a little sidetracked with the fella here tonight. But, I'm just very much in support of this, and I think that they're the perfect family to handle this project, and to ensure that the desirability of living downtown is not affected, so.
Mr. Jakes, did you give your address?
I did not, I'm sorry. It's 225 North Manny Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name's Bonnie Black, and I live at 513 North Manny Avenue, I'm the house next door. I have nothing prepared tonight, but I wanted to tell you that after the community meeting, I looked at the house very, very carefully, and the plans that we were provided by the Demoses', and I wholly, I have no problems with their plan, I think it will be a gift to the street, if they are able to, you're able to rezon this for them, and they can return this structure to what they plan to use it for. Mrs. Demoses', I thank you for looking at that and seeing the potential in the home. I've lived there 18 years, waiting for the neighborhood to come up, and be returned to its splendor. I wish that every house there could be a single-family dwelling that's a rental, I know that's not possible. This will be a really splendid property, and I support it. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
I'm Steve Baughman, I live at 315 North Manny, and have property on Burton Street. I'd like to say that I'm in support of this. It's a good addition, it's a neighborhood in transition, I want to applaud publicly the Demoses' for the way they conducted it, and they conducted a public neighborhood meeting, just for us to express our concerns. I think that was above and beyond a normal way to do it, but I think it was really good to get the acceptance of the neighborhood. And I asked personally the question, you know, "How come you chose this site with so much property available?", and he said, "Because it felt right." And being a lover of old homes, and half nuts anyway that you have to be to buy a house, Bob Lamb was the first realtor that tried to sell me anything, and knows how passionate I was about buying something old.
Thanks for the commercial.
It's got to be nuts. I just want to say that, welcome to the neighborhood if this goes through, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baughman. Anybody else? Nobody? In that case, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I own property in this area, and I will abstain from the vote.
Okay. And we have a letter here from Judge Ben Hall McFarling, in support, I won't read the letter, but in support of the rezoning request as well, so we'll put that into the record. Any other comments or questions from members of the Planning Commission?
Chairman Lamb, I'd just like to comment that I think in the 12 years that I've been on this commission, it's the first time I've ever sat through a public hearing where there's nothing but 100% of positive comment and feedback from every individual who came to speak, and I think that's just a testament to how well this project is going to play out, and what the Demos family means to this community, and I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to the third and final public hearing for the evening, that is the proposed amendments to the major thoroughfare plan to include Bradable Pike as MTI number 30. The planning and transportation staff of the City of Murfreesboro are the applicants. We are honored to have the City of Murfreesboro Transportation Director, Mr. Dana Richardson, with us tonight. Mr. Richardson, welcome. You need to be here for all of our meetings, it'd be great. Mr. Adalot, you want to start us off?
Yes, sir, I do. Included with the agenda materials is a memorandum from Mr. Richardson, and it basically is requesting that we amend our major thoroughfare plan to include Bradable Pike as a listed improvement in the major thoroughfare plan document. And this would be for the portion of Bradable Pike between southeast Broad Street extending southeastward to Rutherford Boulevard. That's the only portion that we're asking to be included in the major thoroughfare plan now. Bradable Pike is a state route, it is designated State Route 99, and what we, I think, I think we all have an awareness that it needs improvement. It's an older street, it has some roadway deficiencies, but what we want to do is get it in the document, so that we can use it as a planning tool to help secure funding necessary to see this project move forward. Mr. Richardson is with us, he may have some additional comments, and he may have some comments for anybody who has questions, and help try to answer questions that the public may have after the public hearing is over.
Okay, Mr. Richardson.
Just want to make some brief comments, and certainly be available to answer questions or respond to comments that may arise from the public hearing. But, as Mr. Adalot stated, this is an old state route. The city's been working with the Department of Transportation over the last couple of years. As you're aware of, back in 2009, we did kind of an interim project to make some safety improvements to the roadway from Middle Tennessee Boulevard to Minerva, which basically was a paving project, something that could be done relatively quickly. It did provide a little bit of safety enhancements by providing some designation between walking areas and the vehicular travel, and certainly, we had the understanding that long-term improvements would entail some things, such as sidewalks and some bike lanes, and things that would take quite a while to develop under the federal regulations and state regulations, being with the state route. Since 2009, I've had several conversations with the Department of Transportation, trying to set up the funding and the program to proceed forward with this. The City of Murfreesboro has, and through the City Council, I think, has been very receptive to partnering with the Department of Transportation, instead of taking the position of it's a state route, and it's T-DOT's responsibility, and the state taking the position. Some of the issues are driven by local development. We decided that the best way, and we do this quite often, is to partner and pursue joint projects with joint funding in cases such as this, and this is certainly not a new case to where we have partnered with the Department of Transportation to try to affect projects. So, we are looking to move forward, we do have a contractual commitment with the Department of Transportation. It has not been presented to the City Council, and if the Planning Commission would approve this, being amended into our current major thoroughfare plan, then our next step would be to have the City Council ratify -- be to have the City Council ratify your actions and also approve a contract with the Department of Transportation to move this project forward. After that, we would look to securing the needed professional services to move the project forward into the design phase, right-of-way phase, and construction phase. So that's kind of where we are at this point, and be glad to answer any questions you may have now or after the public hearing.
Chairman Lamb, I have one. Not being accustomed to the timeframe that it would take, I mean, it sounds like it's taken you a while to get to the point where you're at. What's the timeline with respect to if everybody's in agreement that construction would start and the road would be built, or not built, but improved?
And I'll give you a ballpark, because prior to design and not knowing what all the elements that we're ultimately be dealing with, and typically in a federally funded project, we would be looking between five and ten years. It's very much procedure-oriented. We have a litany of things that we have to go through that we normally wouldn't on city projects, and it does take a substantial amount of time to move these forward.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We will, I'm sure Mr. Adlott and yourself will keep notes of the questions that members, the members of the public may have as they come forward for the comments. There's no other questions from members of the Planning Commission. I'll open the public hearing at this time. If anybody's come forward that'd like to speak.
Chairman Lamb, members of the commission, I'm Richard Baines. I'm a resident of Parkview Terrace. I live about, at Broad and Parkview, about two blocks off of Bradyville. If, I'm in support of this proposal, and in my enthusiasm, my comments might run a minute or two past three minutes if you would indulge me.
If you're the president, the association will work with you on that as long as we don't have a filibuster.
Shortly after moving to Murfreesboro over fifty years ago, I bought a lot off of this two-lane country road, Bradyville Pike, built a house. Everything was R-15 then. It was mostly farms. The old Todd Farm was being developed, and there weren't the problems that we see today. The problems that we find ourselves in today as residents of that area, users of that road, and you yourself as members of the Planning Commission, part of the problems were developed right here in your predecessors, through your predecessors, through the former planners. That area has evolved from R-15 to high-density. High-density housing with no changes in that road in the fifty years that I've lived in that area. There's been one very welcome change after a young girl was killed. The city responded through, I think the planning director said that the state, there's a state road, the state doesn't have any money to spend right now, funding is tight, not much is going to be done. There was quite a public uproar about that. Letters to the editor, editorials in the news journal produced some action. Suddenly, as if by magic, the state's examined the road, come up with the idea, or not the idea, it was a fact. It's one of the most dangerous roads in the state. Someone passed a hat and committed $50,000. It was well spent. The improvements, we, the state got their money's worth out of what was done. I think that the thing I'm more concerned with on this issue is the timing. I don't buy into it that things have to drag out as long as we've heard this five-to-ten-year thing. I understand the nuances of engineering and the moving of utilities, the buying of properties, the right-of-ways. But I've seen things happen out with Gresham Lane, for example, when the state made a boo-boo, and all of a sudden, traffic backed up there at that area trying to get off the interstate. It didn't take ten years to get that fixed. From the day of the problem to the day of the solution, it was a very short period. It was a very short period of time. And I think that the reason I'm here tonight is to lend approval to this plan, but to also put forth some sense of urgency. This is a very, very, very dangerous road. I travel it every day, and the other day, I came down, and there was a lady pushing a stroller with a baby in it, and she was, had two little toddlers with her, maybe four to six years old. I had to slow down, and I moved over toward the center line, traffic coming at me, moved over and slowed down. So you never know what those kids are going to do. And that's a daily occurrence. You have people living in this area and those apartments that are living there with subsidized rent. These people don't have automobiles. They have to walk to Kroger's, the convenience store, or whatnot. And I would surely hope that we wouldn't drag our feet too much on this project because there are people whose lives are endangered walking that highway every day. It's a situation we created. The City of Murfreesboro created this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baines. Who would like to be next?
My name is W.J. Freese. I live at 830 Bradyville Road, corner of West Side Court there. It was my understanding when I talked to the planning and some of the planning people back in the summer, they weren't going to do the part of the road from Broad Street down to Rutherford Boulevard. Now I understand that's being included in there. Is that right?
From southeast Broad to Rutherford is the part that is being done, sir.
So you're not doing the part from Middle Tennessee down to, from Rutherford down to Middle Tennessee?
Yes, sir.
You're doing a whole thing?
Yes, sir. From Broad Street all the way to Rutherford.
My concern is, I live there, my yard, my porch is only sixty feet from the side of the road. I'm just wondering how much of my yard you're going to take, if you're willing and prepared to pay me for it, the true value of it. And it's just, I don't see that that end of the road up there has to be improved that much, because there's very little pedestrian traffic up there, even though there's apartments across the road there. As a matter of fact, if you take any of the roadway up there, there's some apartments up there, you'd be right on the porch up there where the Haynes people own the apartments up there. It probably ain't thirty, forty feet to the road right there. And there's a lake on the other side of the road. So I'm just kind of, until the planning comes through and everything, you know, I'm just apprehensive about that. But I can't lay any blessings on what the guy said here. I understand the other end of the road down there, but I travel that road a lot, and there's not a lot of pedestrian traffic down that way anymore. A lot of those people have moved out down there, a bunch of those houses are empty. You know, I know the city and the state's going to do what they have to do, according to the complaints they've been putting in about it. And that's all I've got to say.
Okay, Mr. Freese. We'll ask the staff to comment on your question at the end of the public hearing. Thank you. Who would like to be next?
Good evening, Mr. Lamb and the rest of the council. My name is Hunter Chambers. I live at 2897 Bradyville Pike. The reason why I'm here this evening is, not only do I agree with what you are trying to plan, and the Transportation Division is trying to plan, I agree with both gentlemen who have preceded me. But the way Bradyville, which I travel daily, is designed both in and out of the city limits, it is, it should be evaluated on a more case-by-case scenario or more of a section-by-section. The improvements of putting in an additional turning lane, putting in sidewalks, putting in underground utilities, spending millions of dollars from Broad all the way to South Rutherford in one unanimous or one consistent way of being, may not be the best way to spend the money. And the reason why I state that is not only does this gentleman, if his front porch is sixty feet away from the side of the road, which is dangerous in itself, but the City of Murfreesboro and the County of Rutherford have commingled in many different ways along Bradyville Pike, going all the way out to Pebbles Road, Pebbles Street, past Urby Lane, past where the synagogue or the, this mosque is going to be built. According to, and I apologize for my attire, and I apologize for not following the notice to attendees, but according to the Daily News Journal, you're expected to be over a thousand more people going to be using this synagogue area or this place of worship there at Veals Road in Bradyville Pike. And according to this picture, this picture here shows the question, or the area that you guys are proposing doing more work to after the unfortunate accident of the death of that young woman. And as you can see, the terrain of the road is quite flat and uniformed, and you guys did a lot of great work in making it wider and making it a little bit more safer. And I think all of us would agree that safety is our main goal, not always money, although unfortunately, you have to balance the two. And I understand that point. But what brought me here tonight was the fact that if you're going to spend millions and millions of dollars dealing with Bradyville Pike from Broad to South Rutherford, .4 miles away from South Rutherford, this accident occurred less than a few weeks ago, and had this lady had her children with her, they would all have been dead. And the reason for this is because Bradyville Pike is crumbling in ways that there is no forgiveness at all for any mistake of your tire. And we're talking about dropping off the side of the road of upwards between three feet and eight feet. Eight feet. If you miss this white mark by a couple inches, you will drop eight feet. Halloween, the kids that are not participating in Halloween on Bradyville Pike, it's too dangerous. School buses themselves drop the children off and let them walk up Urby Lane because they can't make the turn, and they don't pick up the children there, because it's too dangerous. Now, all of this whole way or right-of-way of Bradyville has to be fixed. It has to be widened for the safety of the pedestrians and safety of the people who walk, because Bradyville has annexed certain sections all along Urby, or all along Bradyville Pike. Some of it's county, some of it's city. Some of it's county, some of it's city. It's intermingled. So it would be, in a very respectful manner, I'm asking that you all take some time to work with the county also in dealing with this issue, and appropriate the funds in a more unified way, instead of just throwing money at it and being one way fits all, look at it from a piece-by-piece basis, and spread the money down Bradyville. I'm only talking .4 miles, maybe a mile down south, past South Rutherford. Put in some culverts, put in some dirt, pave it just a little bit. We're not talking about, you know, billions of dollars, but our economy is the way it is today because sometimes people don't spend money wisely. Murfreesboro's a wonderful city. It's wonderful to be next to Nashville. But when we make these kinds of improvements, we should be setting the standard for everybody else. We should be accountable, we should be able to show the rest of the world that we can look at things on a case-by-case basis, be accountable, use our money wisely, make it stretched the best way possible, and prevent these kinds of things from happening. This lady would not have wrecked had there been a burn. The white line is right there. There's no forgiveness whatsoever. I apologize if I offended anybody, it's not my point. Two days later after that accident, another gentleman drove off the side of the road. In conclusion, when I contacted the city, the community services, I guess I'm a little bit more passionate, because ever since I was fifteen, all I've done was save lives, and I've never asked anything from anybody. And I'm choking a little bit, because these children, all I've ever done was EMS, law enforcement, firefighting. It's all I've ever done, my whole entire life. And when I see money get in the way sometimes, or I see things not being, it's not for me to tell the people how to do their business, because I'm not a specialist in it, but there's got to be better ways of doing things. Year-to-date, South Bradyville, the south portion of Bradyville where I'm talking about, there's been eleven single-car accidents, so to speak. Seven of them have injuries to them, seven of them, within a couple miles of South Rutherford. The northern side of Bradyville, which is where you're talking about, is making these improvements. We had ten accidents, called 1045s, and we had three with injuries. And I got that information today. So, again, if it wasn't for Kitterell, the city responds across the street, Kitterell Volunteer Fire Department has to respond all the way from Kitterell. You can imagine how far they have to come if it wasn't for the wisdom of the chief to sometimes be able to stage up closer to the Walmart area and stuff like that at times. The response times would be less. I'm not involved with him, I'm not associated with him, I just know their habits, but he's wise in doing that. But we live on that street, and I guarantee you, probably at least twice a week, three times a week, we have emergency personnel running down that street. So, gentlemen, please, I'm asking you professionally, I'm asking you personally, if my experience means anything to anybody, in the most humble manner I can possibly ask you, please, get together with the county, with politics aside. Sir, I don't know what position you hold within the state, I don't know who's associated with what here, but there's, you just can't have a road like this. You just can't have it.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Appreciate your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody at all? Seeing anyone come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Richardson, I'm sure you made some notes of comments and questions that were made. Could you do your best to address them, please, sir?
Certainly, I'd be glad to try to address these, and these were some good comments, and certainly some relative comments. The, one of the first questions, I think, was a concern about the amount of right-of-way taken or the proximity of the road to the structures along the street. Right now, Bradyville Pike has a varied right-of-way up and down it from 55 to 60 feet. The roadway cross-section that we're talking about building could probably be done within a 60-plus or minus-foot right-of-way, and that is because one major distinction in what exists out there now and what we're planning on building. A lot of what we see as the right-of-way or roadway now is, consists of ditches. These are wide in some cases and certainly very deep. In the construction of a curb-and-gutter street, even though that you may expand out the asphalt and so forth, the ditches, what you see as ditches now will actually be underneath the road in the form of pipes. So you're expanding the pavement out and the sidewalks and stuff out, but they may actually just be at the back of what's already a ditch line now, because all that drainage structure would be underneath the roadway. So that is a primary difference, and while certainly we don't have the design yet and don't know what will be necessitated to accommodate the drainage and so forth, we feel like that we would be in pretty good shape with a three-lane road with the bike lanes and sidewalks, working within a 60-to-70-foot right-of-way, which is not inconsistent with what's out there in a lot of places. what's out there in a lot of places now. There's also comments made about the, the timing of the project. Certainly, we will do everything we can to move this project forward. Some of this we don't have control over, we have to adhere to the state and federal regulatory process. There is a, as I mentioned before, litany of things that we have to do in these projects that we might not necessarily do in a city project, but it is important to us and we are willing to move this forward as fast as we can do that. I think some of the other comments that was, talked about would be basically the expansion of the project to include other limits. Certainly, we're always open to considering other roadway projects. We've worked with the county on other roadway projects over time. We've also worked in combination with the state and Rutherford County in completion of some of these roadway projects. This particular project, I think the limits were selected based on, number one, it is, jurisdictional within the city limits, and number two, it is framed in by the archerel system being Rutherford Boulevard on one end and Broad Street on the other end, and certainly contained within these limits, we have the majority of the traffic volume and the pedestrians. We would be more than happy to approach the, the county and have those discussions with them. As far as expanding it under this project, I don't think we can. There's certainly nothing to say that another phase of a project can't be added for utilization of these federal funds, though they do have to be in the regional transportation plan, and that's something that would require the amendment to the Metropolitan Planning Organization's regional transportation plan, and that would take some time to do, but it's certainly nothing that's out of the realm of possibility, and we would be glad to have that discussion and convey those sentiments to our county mayor as well. I, I hope I hit all those. If I missed something, please tell me and I'd be glad to try to respond to them.
Dana, I want to add something else, and you may want to elaborate just briefly, but this is, this is sort of an interim measure to add, this is an amendment to our current major thoroughfare plan. We expect that in the future we'll be bringing some recommendations for updating on a more comprehensive manner, and there will be opportunities for people to participate and maybe identify projects that need to be added. So this is more of an interim measure to move this project forward because we don't want to delay any further with it. We want to get going and get the funding in place and, and get the project moving. But in the future, when we update it more on a comprehensive manner, there will be opportunities for public participation, and, and some of those comments will be very well taken to heart.
Mr. Adlott's correct, and I appreciate you bringing that up. We do have some funding in place to update our major thoroughfare plan, and we will be doing this probably next spring on a little bit more comprehensive basis, including Rutherford County, Smyrna and Laverne with Murfreesboro and looking at a, a county-wide transportation plan. Good point.
And all we're doing tonight is adding this to the major transportation plan, long-term transportation plan, and we're not voting or discussing and not deciding what is going to be built, where and when at this point, we're just adding this as part of the plan.
That is correct.
Okay. Mr. Richardson, do you have anything else?
No, unless there are other questions.
Are there any other questions from Mr. Richardson from the planning commission?
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you being here, sir. Any comments or questions from members of the planning commission?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda this evening. The next portion is staff reports and other business. Mr. Adlott?
I have none tonight.
Amazing. Thank you, Mr. Adlott. In that case, we stand adjourned.